Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this regular city council meeting of the City of Richfield. It's September 24th, 2024 and 7:00 PM. If you are able, please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have the open forum. If you are watching online, you can call into the open forum by dialing 1-415-655-0001. Use webinar access code 2633-038-2260 and password 1234. So is there anyone that is online at the moment? All right, and I have one card. We have our new registration cards here, and we have one card, so I'm going to invite Heidi Guybor up to speak. And please state your name and your address, and since we have the card, you don't need to sign in.
Yeah, thank you. Heidi Guybor, 6915 Wentworth, here in Richfield. Good evening. I'm here to speak on the topic of the sales tax referenda in this election. While it's true that there are maintenance issues and improvements that need to be addressed at the three locations proposed to benefit if this tax is passed, as Councilperson Haver O'Leary pointed out on a community Facebook post, "We've spent too long neglecting our parks' assets." I agree. So my questions are, why have they been neglected? How long has it been since money earmarked for maintenance has not been used for such? And why is it thought that tens of millions of dollars will keep that from happening in the future? The fact that our parks' assets haven't been cared for and maintained as they should have been seems to be status quo for Richfield. Do we not have a budget which includes maintaining our city properties? One would expect that that's a given and a basic line item to have in a city budget. Speaking specifically about the community center, I'd like to see if the current, I'd like to see the current building remain, receiving necessary restoration, and if needed, possible rethinking the distribution of the spaces within. If indeed more space is needed for some activities, I suggest utilizing buildings which already exist in our parks. My husband and I frequently walk through Augsburg Park, and on a whim, I looked through the window of the warming house and found the building to be empty. It's usually closed up and unused. It's a sturdy building and good size. We were thinking what a perfect space it would be for something like a teen drop-in center or a meeting space for any number of organizations. And this is only one building in one park. How many other empty buildings does our city have which can be used for some of the reasons that have been suggested to tear down a sturdy brick community center which has been the heart of our community since I was a child? Some updates could be beneficial, but that doesn't mean that the entire building must be demolished to do it. Our current community center serves all ages in our city with a variety of activities. Just a few yards away from it is an enlarged skate park, and the library only a block away is being remodeled with even more meeting spaces. If an athletic center is what's being wished for, besides school gyms and activities and community athletic opportunities, there are also fitness centers in Richfield, Bloomington, and on the border of Richfield and Edina, and the new adventure park and other remodeled parks for outdoor alternative activities. Richfield is a small community, both in geographic size and population. Why would we even need larger and more complex venues to maintain when we apparently cannot maintain what we already have? Finally, in this world of tax hikers and those who want to have what communities two and three times our size have, let's be original thinkers and come up with ways to preserve the wonderful assets we already have without tearing them down and building all new. Let's maintain the city properties and buildings we presently have instead of pipe-dreaming ways to make bigger spaces which require even more maintenance and staff, meaning an even larger budget with more taxes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? And it doesn't look like anyone has come online, so we'll close out the open forum. If you can hand this down to the city clerk, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of August 28th, 2024, the city council work session of September 10th, 2024, and the city council meeting of September 10th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have approved those minutes. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have approved the agenda. Next, we have a presentation from our Richfield Beacons Youth Researchers, and I'm going to have them come up to the podium and introduce themselves and turn it over to you all. Thank you and welcome.
Hi, thank you for being here. We are Youth Participatory Action Researchers from Richfield High School, Beacons Program, and my name is Linda, and I'm in 10th grade.
My name is Fatou, and I'm in 11th grade.
My name is Felicia. I'm in 11th grade.
My name is Mohammed. I'm in 11th grade.
And our big question is, what community spaces do the youth need to have a strong and involved community? And throughout the summer, we've been collecting data for that, and we went to the fire department, Taft Park, Osandys, and our Beacons Office, the Richfield Community Center, and Target, and restaurants.
And why the data was collected, they're collecting this data to show a new perspective upon the youth, and we want to create a positive change within our Richfield community.
How our data was collected? So throughout the summer, we've met with city leaders, community members, and we've made surveys, which we've gotten 134 responses from, and we've made focus groups, and basically, what was asked in those meetings, in those surveys, in those focus groups was, what do youth need? What do youth want? What are some barriers to those involvements? And why do you feel that way? We've been to different places, we've met with different people, and we've got different perspectives on how people feel.
We found out a lot about the current involvement of youth in Richfield. As you can see on the first graph, there's a lot of youth that say they feel involved in the Richfield community, but there's still like 20.5% of youth that say that they don't feel involved, along with involvement. We found out where they are going. They said that they're spending their time at school after hours, so like sports and different after-school clubs, for example, Beacons. And that's where they're going. But we also found out that there's barriers to participation in Richfield. To start, transportation. I did just get something on our school website saying that we can tell, put in a form our, like, routes to school to improve those. But along with transportation, there's also, like, not opportunities for us to be involved in the community. For example, our Recreation Services Program Guide, I look through it, I look through it every year, but I'm finding a lot of stuff for younger kids, like ages under 12, but 14 to 18, there's like a Zumba class you can go to with all ages, but I don't think teens want to go to a Zumba class. Yeah. We also found out with this, what youth want, that's our big question, what they want, what do they need? They want a community center with access to open gyms, food, comfortable seating, and fun activities. Want a place to go besides the school and clubs, because you can only be at the school until like 5:30, and then you're kicked out because there's no adults there. Fun activities, we want stuff to do. We like playing Connect Four in the Beacons Office. Gotten really competitive, it's gotten pretty bad here. But we also want events in Richfield coordinated for youth by youth. We know what we want best in events around the city, but we don't really see that. Cultural-based programming and events. At the high school, Richfield High School, we had a pow-wow, and it's become, will become an annual thing, and it was really popular. Everyone had a lot of fun. We also had a culture day, and that was honestly like the most unified I've ever seen, the school cheering for different cultures, yeah. And again, increased opportunities for summer programming. I'm bored during the summer. Want to hang out doing stuff that my friends can do with me.
Or ask to the Richfield City Council is, we'd like y'all to create a city, a teen council, ranging from the ages of 14 to 18. For example, the Minneapolis Youth Congress, they have a youth, they have a teen council that helps them plan events. We'd also like y'all to increase the signage just to include teens within the parks, because, for example, Augsburg Park, their signs is very vague and confusing, so we'd like y'all to make it more clear, more welcoming, more concise. We'd also like you to encourage hangouts, gym spaces, and Wi-Fi within certain spots where a teen can go there and hang out and enjoy themselves. We'd also like y'all to create more facilities that are centered for teens in the community center.
What we've accomplished is we've unlocked some soccer nets at three different parks, such as Washington, Christian, and Donaldson Park, and we did that by talking to one of our city leaders named Jill. And we've made connections with city leaders. We met Jill and Simon, and we increased our confidence in talking out in public spaces about what we have done during the summer. And we also presented at Penn Fest to the Richfield community.
Our future plans include a PSA video about youth presence and participations. Would like to stress that because youth don't normally participate, nor are they involved in the activities, events, or anything, really. They usually feel welcome but stay at home, so we'd like them to go outside more and feel like they can feel welcome. We'd also like to put letters in the park to increase encouragement through the community, and so other people can help the community in any way. Maybe they could help with the parks, maybe they could help with the kids, anything, really.
Questions? All right, do we have any questions? Can you tell me more about the letters in the park? Like, how would that work?
Yeah, okay.
So the idea for the letters of parks were actually my idea, because I remember going to a park one time and just feeling not welcomed, and there was this group going around giving out letters, and I found a letter that says, like, you belong, you're included, and that just really inspired me, and I want other people to feel the way that I felt when the group came up to me and gave me a letter. So I remember there was like stickers and like little staples.
So we handmade bracelets to put with the letters, just put them in an envelope with one of our cards that we made by hand a few weeks ago, put them in a park somewhere. I think we planned on putting it in four parks and the high school.
So you would put those out for people to find?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Other questions that people had? Councilmember Haver O'Leary?
First off, thank you for your, your presentation. It's very timely with the questions about the community center in particular on the ballot. I do want to ask just a follow-up, specifically the comment about the sign improvements. Is that about like the, like rural signs, like when the park is closed, or what did you mean there?
Okay. In Augsburg Park, the first thing you see is it says "Inclusive Park," and then you turn and you see a sign that says, "Ages 6 to 12 recommended." And, you know, it's right by the high school, and, you know, I walk home sometimes, and if I'm feeling adventurous or wanting to have a little bit of fun, go to the park, sit on a swing for a little bit, you know, have fun with my friends. But, you know, with that sign there, there's adults that sometimes think like, oh, teenagers, what are they doing at a park? It's made for tiny little kids, but, oh, especially in our focus group, a lot of teens mentioned being looked at weirdly or think kicked out of the park by parents who didn't want them there. So just wanting something that says, hey, people can be here, it's a park.
Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Troutman?
Hey, thank you, Mayor, and welcome, folks. It's so good to see you, and I just want to tell you how grateful I am that, not just that you took the time to come here, but I think you see, I feel like everything we talked about this summer, you guys just blew it out of the water. You came, you did the homework, you did all the homework on the front end. You are sharing your opinions, but you're not just sharing your opinions, you're sharing the community's opinions because you did the hard work to organize and to listen and then to record what you heard from community. And so I just want to reflect that your power when you come here is not just your voice, but it's the voice of the people that you made a connection with this summer. And, one, that's just to be applauded, like, great, great job. Can we just give you a round of applause? Like, I just think that's great. So, excellent, excellent job. As the father of a Richfield high schooler, playgrounds are fun for high schoolers, I can attest that that's, and, but that's actually a really great observation, and that's only one of maybe a dozen great observations that you made. So you're not just amplifying your voices for your own benefit, but I'm reminded of that, even though I have a Richfield high schooler in my home. So you're just, you're shining a light on things that we need to see and we need to hear. So thank you, great work. I think it's a great idea to have a teen commission. Also, I'll just mention this, I think I might have mentioned this before, all of our commissions now that have all the powers that every commission has, has at least two spaces for teen commissioners. So that, we just had a planning meeting talking about what kind, are we going to have a Starbucks? And is that Starbucks going to have a third space? Is that going to be available for community? Your voices would be welcome there, not just as teenagers, but as residents. But it's specifically there for, for youth. So it's a great idea, I want to receive it, but I also just want to send that message to you and the other youth that you're talking to, to just say, we have a space, and your voices do matter, and I just can tell you that, that the youth that have participated have added great value to our commissioners. But without, without reservation, incredible presentation, really good content, and really good work coming up to this moment. This moment could go well or poorly. You guys did all the work this summer, and it's just, this is just the, the fruit of that, so thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Wayland?
Thank you. I, I agree with everything that was just said, and I want to make sure that this isn't just kind of a, a one-off thing that doesn't go anywhere. You mentioned having met with Jill, who for folks who don't know is on our recreation staff. Is that a, was that just with her? Do you have an ongoing conversation with our recreation staff to follow through on some of these things?
At first, it was a one-time thing to, like, yeah, we met with her once at the community center for a current problem, but we'd like to meet with her more in the future to solve more issues within the community.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would just reflect back to staff. I know our recreation folks aren't here, but this seems like a really powerful opportunity. Certainly for you all to know, if there, if the city does move forward with planning a new community center, that there would be, there's like a, a super, it's a little more than like drawing on a napkin, but it's like a super general vision of what that could be, so that we could get a general idea of how much it might cost. But there would be a whole robust, like, community engagement process that I think it would be wonderful if there were a specific, like, youth-led, youth input gathering process. And so if you all wanted to be part of that, that could be really meaningful. The other idea you had that I had a specific question, I must admit, at this point, I'm old enough that I don't remember all of what it was like to be a teenager, but I, I remember both the value in spaces where adults saw me as like a, my own person, with my own ideas, and also there were times where I just really didn't want to be around adults. Do you, in terms of the idea around creating events, that youth have more of a, more of a space that's created for them, it seems like a route of least resistance, the easy route, would be if you all were interested in partnering as we, and sometimes, community groups plan things like Penn Fest, or the Fourth of July, or events that are for the whole community. How much are you interested in that, and how much are you interested in events that are specifically just for teens?
Extremely interested in helping the process of, like, planning stuff out, because, as we said, youth-coordinated and youth-for-youth. Would be very interested in helping out with that, because that's something that's really important to us.
Okay. I don't think we're going to figure that out here, but let's keep the conversation going of like, who all you should be in touch with, and if you ever feel like, oh, this would be a great opportunity, and I have no idea who to talk to, we can definitely help with that. So, thank you again.
City Manager Rodriguez, you wanted to add something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I'm noting that, I have rec follow-up, but also, I did want to tell you all that we have had this presentation before the director's meeting. So we, we had the Beacons researchers out, and they made also a wonderful presentation to our staff, so that work has started. But I will make a note to follow up with rec as well.
Thank you. And I was thinking about what Councilmember Troutman said about vacant positions on commissions, and we currently, for the Community Services Commission, have two vacant youth positions, and that would directly relate to recreation and parks and all the different things in the community, the things that you were talking about. So if you can spread the word to people for that, in the meantime, if we, we can talk about like a teen council and stuff, but let's take advantage of the vacant spots that we have open now. I was very excited to hear all the work that you guys did, and I appreciate the presentation. Thank you so much, and please come back to other council meetings. I hope this is not your last council meeting that you attend.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd also like to credit, we'd also like to credit Alex and Antoine and Nazia for not being here. They also massively contributed to this project.
And, and Van, and BJ, and Nikki, and Haley, and Roz, oh my God.
Thank you all. Next, we'll be moving on to our proclamation celebrating LGBTQ+ History Month. So if Commissioner Glupka could join me at the frontier? You're on, you're on camera.
Where'd Simon go?
He'll be back.
Here he comes.
Here he comes. All right, thank you. This is a proclamation of the City of Richfield. Whereas the path towards LGBTQ+ equality and liberation has been paved by courageous persons who have fought for the rights to love and be loved, the right to be who they are, and their positive societal contributions of advancing areas of diversity, inclusion, equity, and respect deserve recognition. And whereas LGBTQ+ History Month celebrates and commemorates those who fought for equal rights and services for the LGBTQ+ community and is a means of educating others, promoting a culture of acceptance and inclusivity, and advancing equality for all, and whereas the teaching of LGBTQ+ history has been historically suppressed and currently books about LGBTQ+ history are being banned. The City of Richfield stands with its LGBTQ+ community members and all of our citizens in support of the accurate teaching of history and honors the champions of LGBTQ+ equality and the importance of their contributions. And whereas the City of Richfield is proud of its diverse community, committed to equality of individuals of all sexual orientations, gender identities, and expressions, and fully supports the compassionate and respectful treatment of our LGBTQ+ community members. And whereas the City of Richfield endeavors to eliminate prejudice wherever it exists, recognize the multitude of identities that make each of us unique and envision a safe, inclusive world that allows all members of society to live openly and truthfully. Now, therefore I, Mary Supple, Mayor of Richfield, on behalf of the Richfield City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as LGBTQ+ History Month in Richfield, and call on the people of Richfield to observe this period with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies, and continue to honor the contributions to our collective history of the LGBTQ+ Americans throughout the year. Proclaim this 24th Day of September 2024. And here, I'm going to ask you to receive this proclamation, and if you'd like to say a few words, go for it.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate Richfield's consistency in supporting the LGBTQ community. But since this is about LGBTQ history, the history is kind of sad, really. I mean, the history of LGBTQ people is that people have tried to kill us over the centuries. And for me, one of the biggest moments in LGBTQ history happened at the University of Sexology back on May 6, 1933. That's when the Nazis, three months after Hitler became Chancellor of Germany, ransacked the, the most advanced research facility in the world on people like me, and then took all the books out onto the street and burned them, put thousands of people, actually, maybe more than thousands, into concentration camps. And all of that was six years before things started to get really bad for the Jewish people in Germany. So, right now, we've got a presidential candidate who has pledged to erase people like me everywhere in the United States government. And so, in this country, the history is up in the air right now, and it's going to depend a lot on what happens on November 5. I know people who have fled states that have passed laws against their children, and they had to sell everything, had a loss, and just get out so that they could protect their children, because they're like me. So anyway, I do appreciate Richfield, and I just wanted to say a couple of things about how it is out there. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to add anything? All right, go ahead, Councilmember Wayland. All right, go ahead, councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, whenever we do these proclamations, we always include the call on the people of Richfield to observe this period with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies. And I, even before Amara, you had mentioned it, I just am struck by it's, this being October, and I cannot imagine a more appropriate activity than voting. That some candidates are more clear than others about their stance on this issue, but we are definitely, the history of this is not settled, that it's very much in process. And there are some people running for office who want to take us what I would consider backwards. And so just, there's a lot of reasons to vote this year, but certainly would encourage people to be part of creating the next stage of history in this regard.
People to be in favor of what this country is founded on. Equality, freedom, inalienable rights. So, and there's nothing in there about, except for some people. So, I'll leave it with that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Turn on the microphone here. Next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. I'll turn it over to city manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, item A, consider a resolution supporting the Richfield Economic Development Authority's application to the Hennepin County Business District Initiative Program. Item B, consider the approval of an agreement with the city of Bloomington for the provision of food, pools, lodging, therapeutic massage, and body art establishment inspection services for the city of Ritual for 2025. Item C, consider approval of the 2024-2025 Emergency Preparedness Agreement with the city of Bloomington, using public health emergency preparedness grant funds distributed by a federal grant from the Centers for Disease Control to provide services in the area of public health, emergency preparedness, bioterrorism, and the development of a response system. Item D, a resolution endorsing the constitutional amendment to reauthorize the dedication of state lottery proceeds to the Environment and Natural Resources Trust Fund. Item E, consider a resolution accepting a grant from Great River Greening in the amount of $105,100 to provide habitat restoration services at Woodlake Nature Center. Item F, consider the adoption of a resolution appointing election judges for the general election on November 5, 2024. And I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
And move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I just wanted to call attention to the first item. I've already discussed and voted on, voted on it as a member of the EDA, but I am excited about the grant that we are pursuing to help with branding and placemaking for downtown Richfield. And particularly, the staff report has a nice little background of the various plans and history of the concept of downtown, or like Lyndale, or Nicolet pub, anyway. The various names has gone over. Hopefully, we'll come up with a really cohesive brand that helps us build that area out in the future.
Any other discussion? I want to do a big thank you to everyone who's volunteered to be an election judge. So we're passing our authorization on a whole list of people, and they all deserve a great deal of thank you. And I'm very excited about the Great River Greening grant that's going to help with the Oak Savannah at Woodlake Nature Center. Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And we have passed the consent calendar. Moving along, we'll go to item number six, the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider the second reading and hold a public hearing for an ordinance amendment to the Richfield City Code Appendix D, the Fee Schedule, related to building, planning, and zoning fees. City staff annually review fees to determine if charges for permits and services are appropriate. Staff want to ensure the costs of issuance for fees and permits reflect the staff time and costs related to performing the services associated with them. Staff also work to ensure that costs for city services are in line with our peer communities, are not excessive, and are in compliance with state statute. Fees related to building permits, zoning, and other land use permits are established by Appendix D of the city's code, but unlike other fees included in the budget agenda item, charges for building, planning, and zoning are required to be set by ordinance, not by resolution. Does staff have anything to add on this item?
We're available for questions.
Thank you. At this point, then, I would open the public hearing. I believe the call-in option is still available. If we could add that to the screen? Thank you. Same call-in information as earlier. And we'll give people, there's no one currently there, no one currently in the room, but we'll give folks 30 seconds to a minute to see if anyone is currently calling in. While we're waiting, can I ask city attorney, is summary publication, is that able to be added in one motion to the other part of this? Or should those be two separate motions?
Councilmember Whalen, you can do it in one motion.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing anyone online or anyone in the room, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The public hearing is closed.
Thank you. Then I would make a motion that we approve the attached ordinance amendment to Richfield City Code Appendix D, the Fee Schedule, related to building, planning, and zoning fees, and approve a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving those two motions, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we have approved the attached amendments to the Appendix D and approved the summary publication. Next, we will move on to the city manager's report. City manager Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting, we had two residents that spoke at the open forum. One of the residents had some concerns about the audit, and we discussed those concerns as part of the audit presentation. The other resident, Mr. Ernstur, wanted answers to his questions, which I provided during the city manager's report. I also emailed those questions, or I'm sorry, those answers to him a few days after the meeting. And then we had several residents that contacted us via email, and I read their comments, and it was related to our budget discussion, particularly about the recommendation to add to police officers. And so we had a long discussion about that. And I also wanted to, as everybody knows, but I'll just echo it, early voting has started. It is off to a rapid clip already, and I do want to thank our city clerk, Michelle Friedrich, for all her work. It's been going very smoothly, but already, I think you said 170 ballots that were, we've taken in and processed, so.
All right. Well, hopefully, people will continue voting, we'll have a high, high voter turnout. Moving on to claims and payroll?
I would move claims and payroll. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Claims and payroll have been approved. We'll go to hats off to Hometown Hits. Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. Two hats off, I know I already shared that, but for the Beacon researchers, I just think they did an incredible job, and they did what they said they were going to do, they did great research, they put the hours in, and hats off to our high schoolers for being so involved in our community. I also, I imagine other people will also have this hats off, but for everybody who came out and everybody who helped put on Pen Fest this last week, huge, huge thanks, and really grateful, really proud of our city. And, well, I'll just, one more hats off for our election judges. It is not a highly paid and not a glamorous job, but they really are keepers of democracy. And in a moment where people say things like, election judges are winning or they're fighting for us, I really appreciate, I looked down the list, I know there are folks from multiple parties who are election judges, but they're not there in their party capacity. They're there as residents that we trust to ensure that we have integrity in our system. So hats off to all of our election judges.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
I have no items for tonight, but I will also share the thank you for Pen Fest, which was a great time.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, I just want to make mention, a reminder to people that the Richfield Farmer's Market is still in session, and the hours are 8:00 a.m. till noon every Saturday, and it's a great time to come out to see different vendors and to see what the autumn produce and flowers and everything else that's involved is there.
Councilmember Whalen?
Nothing to add, just would echo all of the thanks for those who enjoyed and those who made happen Pen Fest. And then, yeah, just want to lift up early voting again and celebrate that we in Minnesota, we have, I mean, across the country, have reliable, trustworthy, secure elections, but that in Minnesota, we have especially made a point of making voting easier for everyone who's eligible, expanding some of that eligibility, restoring voting rights to people who are, have finished their time and are out in the community, passed now a year and a half ago, that the, if you are someone who absentee votes, most times, there's now a permanent absentee voter list. You don't have to re-register for that every year. If you are a 16 or 17-year-old excited about voting in the future, you can pre-register to vote. And so, just want to lift up the work of our secretary of state, Steve Simon, all the way down to every single election judge, our city clerk here in town, that we have a good process, and it's very approachable and accessible while being secure and trustworthy. So just encourage people to take advantage of that and make your plan to vote sometime in the next 40-some days, I didn't count, 41 or something like that.
Thank you. I'd like to do a hats off to the Richfield League of Women Voters. They have been going out and explaining to people how the process works. They were at Pen Fest, they had a meeting that went over the ballot measure questions this weekend. Today, they were out at Village Shores and were answering questions like how to register in person, what documents you would need if you needed to register, how to do absentee voting, how to do early voting, how to do early in-person voting, going through all of the different things and answering all the questions that everybody had. So I think it's really important that we open up the process and make sure everybody understands how it all works. So my hats off is to the Richfield League of Women Voters. Thank you. With that, we have no further business, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We stand adjourned.